Well, thank. Thank you all very much for joining. As I say, we're just waiting for councillor Fox to join us. So as vice chairman, I shall take on the role just for a moment. Ah, hold on. It looks like Lucy may be able to get the chairman in. So any apologies?
Non-received chair.
Okay, which brings us to declarations of interest. Ah, here's June now. So when she gets here, I shall hand back to June.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can't see you, though.
Um, right. What a nightmare. I tried fifteen minutes to get on.
Well, you're on, but just you just we can't see you.
Okay, I don't know why.
Well, do you want to log out?
Can you continue for a couple of minutes and I'll I'll see if I can get it on another screen?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Sorry.
Not a problem, not a problem. So that brings us to item two on the agenda, declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations of interest? No, I can't.
That's non-chair.
Yep. And as I say, the first time I won't actually be declaring on fees and charges as I'm no longer a funeral celebrant. So I don't need to declare anymore. So item three petitions, deputations and questions. Do we have any petitions, deputations and questions?
Non-received chair.
Okay, item four, questions with notice from members. Do we have any questions of notice?
Non-received chair.
Okay, which brings us to notices of motion from members, item five.
Non-received chair.
Okay, item six, consideration of any matter referred to the committee for a decision in relation to calling of a decision.
Non-received chair.
Okay, which brings us to substantive item of the evening, item seven, the draft revenue and capital budget. We are to receive a report from Sev Delaroca. So shall we hand over to Sev? Oh, Karen first, yeah.
I'll go first, thanks, Chair, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so the draft budget for the new financial year twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm presenting a budget of forty-two point three, four, five million, which is currently undergoing online and face-to-face public consultation in Oakham and Uppingham markets. This will ascertain what Rutland residents understand about council finances. The consultation will close on the ninth of February, after which we will publish the results and decide next steps. I know from the list of detailed questions this scrutiny committee presented that a draft budget document was read in some depth. So I don't intend to go through a long preamble here. The answers to your questions were provided earlier today, and I would like to thank Mr. Delaroca and anybody else that had input to the replies for a very quick turnaround and hard work in providing the answers. Highlights of the draft budget are we received a one-year settlement only, so planning beyond this is difficult. However, we balance the books with less than a hundred thousand pound reliance on reserves, which is good news. This is predicated on a four point nine nine percent increase in council tax, three percent of this being adult social care preset. We are facing many pressures. These are detailed in the document, including rising inflation and new legislation, with uncertain government funding giving rise to financial risk. Also, the government expects Rutland to raise eighty percent of our revenue through council tax. Typically, in other councils, this is sixty percent. This is unfair, and we are working with RMP to lobby government ministers regarding the unjust treatment of Rutland residents. Some good news, though. Once we close the books on the current financial year, we will have made over two million pounds of cost savings. This is amazing, and my thanks to everybody for their hard work and focus in achieving a brilliant result. Despite this, though, there's always a but. We have we have a way to go. The medium-term financial plan is forecasting a two-point-two million pound deficit in twenty-three, twenty-four. Therefore, we are still working on identifying savings for the year twenty-two, twenty-three and into the future. We recognise the need for transformational change to deliver further efficiencies in the way we operate and are structured. I truly believe we need independent, objective, apolitical experience help with this from a company with a proven track record in public services to advisers undergo this transformation. With this in mind, the council is currently undertaking due diligence to this effect, and I hasten to add without any obligation attached to it. And just for any members of the public listening, the adults and children's social care elements of the budget were scrutinised last night by a joint adults and children's scrutiny committee. At this point, I'm going to stop and ask the Chair if there are any questions, please.
Thank you, Karen, and I can say that I will be able to hand over to June councillor Fox as she has joined us. So I will now step down as Chair. You're on mute, June. You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay. Now just get rid of this iPad to get feedback. Sorry about that. That was a bit of a nightmare. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can. And Nick's got his hand up.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I can't hear you, though. Um, Nick's got his hands up. Can Nick, can you say your question, please?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, this is a question, I think, for Karen as portfolio holder. I read with interest the responses today, and I think Gordon may have some further comment on it. But I would just like some clarity, particularly on the back of your statement about the due diligence on a potential consultant. I think going back two years ago, we did the matrix exercise of potential ideas of what services members could look to cut or remove. I think at the time there was talk about it was very difficult because we didn't know the value on each of those. Since that point, I don't recall the portfolio holder coming back to members and asking us to make any of those difficult decisions and to have ideas about what members feel that we could potentially be cutting in order to reduce the future budget. Surely this is a step that we should be looking at and taking before we invest a six-figure number in in consultants. And I know there's various opinions on those, but certainly there's some ideas from the matrix that I recall, such as ideas around the museum, civic community sites, et cetera, which I don't believe that certainly members have explored or we have been asked to make those difficult decisions. I think the finance team has done a fantastic job finding two million savings to date. But in my opinion, I don't think that's it. And I think there's now decisions to make which are not necessarily for finance they have to make because they have political ramifications. And I would like to see members approach before we see consultants.
Absolutely. I wholeheartedly agree with that. And behind the scenes, we did we did make a lot of the savings that we identified last year, and the council signed off in July, that were in that exercise that we completed. The difficult ones, though, weren't. And so what's happening now is that the senior management team have been through, and we have another list that's been created of areas that we can cut rather than what we can't look at. And that list is is actually in existence. It has a series of questions posed against it that members will need to answer. We have a first cut of that list that's going in front of Cabinet on Thursday next week, and then we will be able to disseminate that to members. So we will expect full member involvement in taking that list forward as well, and that includes that will include items for savings this year and longer term and bigger initiatives as well, that members will also need help us prioritise. So just watch this space, Nick, over the next couple of weeks.
Could I ask a supplementary about that, please, Karen, if that's okay? Um, I I I'm glad to hear what you're saying. That's the first time, maybe my ears have been blocked. That's the first time I've I've heard that, and I do welcome that we have the opportunity to try and make the savings before a consultant does. I would hate to see a hundred grand bill and savings on it, and what we potentially could have decided ourselves. My my question is based on your response and the order of the order of play, so to speak. Surely I would suggest it would be better to go to members to see the list and decide on a route forward for then Cabinet to approve that way forward as opposed to Cabinet to do the screening and then for members to put a rubber stamp on potentially what's left.
But we're just doing a sense check, Nick, that that's all.
But you won't be removing anything from that list?
No, we'd just be looking just looking at what literally what's on the list, to be honest, and then making or just making comment on it. And we won't be we won't be taking stuff off. But the 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 use of the consultants, really. We have been discussing that to move forward and make some significant change to the council that we we should probably need to restructure it. And it's more about the structural change that we would need some consultants to input to.
Thank you. I'm always going to be dubious about consultants, but I believe others to have their opinion, Gordon.
Got a bit of an echo there, June.
I know. Councillor Waller, would you like to go next? Thank you, Chairman. I have a number of things I want to say, but at this point, I will just say one. And it's in relation to the discussion we've just had. I agree completely with what councillor Beggie was saying. And my concern isn't about consultants per se. Many of my former Audit Commission colleagues became consultants, and I'm sure did a very good job. What concerns me is I don't know how anybody, any consultant could have the right sort of experience to be able to deliver savings in an authority like Rutland. We, I I as you all know, rail against people saying, oh, but we're special, we're different. And I keep saying, no, we're just a local authority like everybody else. But actually, there are some respects where we are very, very different. We are small, and I don't mean the geography. I mean the number of staff we've got for the services that we deliver. We have to deliver the complete range of local government services, unlike Leicestershire or our neighbours in South Castlevan, both of whom deliver only parts, which makes our job more complex. And we have successfully been cutting our budget virtually since I became a councillor twelve years ago. So we we have cut all the the fat already. And restructuring, unless we are going to lose significant numbers of staff, isn't going to lead to savings. And I'm not convinced that we have staff who we could simply make redundant in in the sorts of numbers we're talking about. I mean, clearly, the odd post here or there, you might be able to. Now, there are other options which we have explored in the past, such as shared services with somebody else, buying in provision from somewhere else, all of which might be options that this consultant or these consultants came up with, which may or may not save us money. I mean, we we thought we were doing well with legal services some years ago. And yet, since that time, the world has changed, and we've employed more legal officers ourselves to fill the gaps. So it isn't always the the answer. So any consultant as part of the due diligence, I would want them to be able to convince us that they had worked with councils of our complexity, but with the size of budget that we have got and have resulted in savings. Otherwise, we could use that potentially a hundred thousand pounds to employ two middle managers to actually get things organised a bit better. So we weren't for arguing, for example, letting contracts at the last minute and that we were doing proper tendering exercises and even more important, the evaluation of need prior to tender. So I think we need to be very, very careful on on that one. That's my comment on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Um, Sev, would you like to come up?
I'll defer to councillor Payne if she wishes to reply before myself.
Sev has been doing due diligence and looking at the market. No, no commitment or no expenses or no money's been paid for any anything. You don't you don't restructure without redesigning your business processes. And a redesign of the way the council operates is comes before restructuring and then taking people out. So, you know, the prime objective isn't to take people out. It's about doing things differently and more efficiently and effectively. It's not about taking people out. Doing things more efficiently and more effectively can take costs out. I haven't actually spoken to these any any consultants that Sev has been talking to. That's happening tomorrow at our away day. So I'm going to defer to Sev now. But we need to redesign, and redesign could mean shared services. It doesn't mean taking people out necessarily, but we can take costs out by being more effective and efficient.
Do you have a supplementary call? Or shall I pass over to Sev?
No, I'll simply say, yes, of course, we all understand that. But I think we are a place where there isn't a huge opportunity to do things differently and still meet need. And then there is some, I won't deny there is some, but not as much as you might think. An investment in technology, which is the normal way of doing it, isn't necessarily the answer either when you have an aging population as we have, who are many of whom are still resistant to using technology. In another ten years' time, we'll be in a different world because more people will have been using it in work and use as they carry on using as they get older. But we're in a transition phase in that respect at the moment.
Sev, did you want to come back?
Yeah, I did just pick up on a few points that have been raised. Where to start? I I actually, I didn't recognise what councillor Beggie said, actually. Because he talked about next time with members ages ago, we haven't heard anything since, which I think is doesn't represent actually what we'd be doing here in Rutland. Actually, we last year in July, members were presented with a series of savings which we approved. We also, as part of that savings paper, presented a series of things, further things that we were looking at and considering longer-term options, which we which we are looking at. And as councillor Payne said, we are trying to move ourselves into a position where we can ask members a series of questions that would allow us to get a response, that would allow us to take forward those savings in a meaningful way. And we've been thinking very hard about the questions that we ask members because we've got to make sure the questions are phrased and worded appropriately to give us a clear direction moving forward. And I'll give you a funny example, and I'm not saying this is a question we will ask, but I'll give a theoretical example. If we say to members, would you like us to explore how we might move forward cultural services? You'll say, oh, that's wonderful, Sev. Please have a look at some options. But I don't think that's really where we're at. We've got over two million pounds to save, and we need to be really clear. So I think a better question or a question we could ask is, do we agree that we need to reduce the deficit? Do you agree that that cultural services need to break even? And if they can't, we'll stop delivering them. That's a much better question. Because if we get an answer to that, we're very clear. We work hard to try and work with our community to increase income or to balance the books on cultural services. And if we can't, we stop doing it. And if we stop doing it, it takes costs out of the budget and we reduce our gap accordingly. So what we've got to do is think about what are the right questions to ask members that are going to allow us to take money out. And and that's really important, and it's why it's taking a bit more time than we wanted to. But we've got to give us a clear direction. What we can't afford to do is ask, as I say, I I I'm going to labour the point because I think it's so important. We can't afford members to say to us, oh, yeah, look at the cultural options, then we'll we'll take a decision in nine, twelve months' time. Because if we do a lot of work and then members say, no, we like the cultural offer, we'll keep it exactly as it is. Our gap stays at two and a half million quid, and we've done a lot of work. So I think that that's the first point I I I would mention. And so, you know, I think we have been doing a lot on that. The the second thing I I would say is that about, you know, I, as the section one-five-one officer, you know, my job is is to give you advice about what we need to do to 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 be financially solvent. I've said to members before in different forums, if this council isn't financially solvent, it don't look good for the council. It certainly doesn't look good for me. I wouldn't get a job anywhere else. I've made that point before to members. Where I am in terms of the work we're doing is I think we need help. We need some external help. Because, as councillor Waller has rightly said, we've saved a lot of money over a long period of time. If I thought it was going to be easy to save two, two and a half million quid, we'd need external help. But it's becoming increasingly difficult for some of the reasons that councillor Waller talked about, the work that we've already done. So I think we need help. I think this is like a battle. We're going into battle. And I'd like the possibility of taking some armour with me. So we need help. And all I'm always saying at this point in time is I would love to explore whether there is somebody out there who can help us. Now, going back to that issue, for me, therefore, my threshold personally, but also of SMT, of bringing somebody in and then them not being able to help us, it is quite high. My threshold's quite high on that because I love councillors Beggie and Brown telling me, what the hell were you playing at? You should never have done it. I know that because I've heard it. So I know that. And I wouldn't do it for myself because I've just said I won't get a job anywhere else if we're not financially solvent. So my threshold's quite high. All I would like to do is to explore the possibility. Consultants I've been talking to have identified millions of pounds worth of saving opportunities elsewhere. That's interesting. Doesn't mean they can find it here, but I would like to have the conversation to explore. That's all I'm simply saying at this moment in time. If we get near to the point where we think it's the right thing for us, I'll come back and I'll talk to members about that. And I'm sure we will as an executive anyway. The the final thing about the point about, well, can they find savings here? Well, somebody's got to find savings here because we've got over two million pounds to spend. And the point about, I think councillor Payne said about, yes, we can look at individual services and do something with the museum or libraries and whatever service you want to look at. But the simple reality is we have got to be a smaller organisation in two or three years' time. We're going to have to do less in terms of services. And leadership and management costs are going to have to be substantially lower. Support costs in resources in my own areas are going to have to be substantially lower than we are now. We cannot afford to carry the headcount we have now in three or four years' time. We will not close the gap. And that's why I think, and I believe, we do need some help because there are organisations out there who've looked at that type of organisational transformation. But we have to take out headcount and costs, leadership and management and at support levels. There is, we simply have no choice on that matter. And that means that we're going to have to pay you some things differently, but also stop doing some things or do some things that we do now to a different standard or maybe do a bit less of it. And that's our simple reality. And that's why I need help. And I'll stop there because I'm talking too much. But I think it's important to get that perspective over. The final thing I've got to say, despite what people think, we don't use consultants very often. Now, people say, well, hang on a minute, we've got consultants on measuring waste, but we do these procurements about once every ten years. The idea, listen, I've been a consultant and I've taken lots of money off lots of different authorities. I'm not a big fan of using consultants myself, certainly for generalist work, but for specialist work, I do support it if it's the right consultancy. But we are not a heavy user of consultants. We're really not. But it looks like it that I think I think the picture is skewed by the fact that we've got massive procurements ongoing where we quite rightly do need some external help. But that hasn't been the norm in my ten and eleven years of being at Rutland. We haven't been heavy on the use of consultants at all, certainly relative to lots of authorities. But, you know, the last two years may it may look a bit different because of the big procurements we've got. But, you know, I think it's unfair to say, you know, you know, we we are the cash cow for consultants because we're certainly not. It's certainly not in my experience. I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. If you don't mind, if I could just say something, because obviously I joined the meeting rather late. For I did try fifteen minutes to get on beforehand. But what I was going to say before we actually got five and seven is I wanted to congratulate Sev and the finance team for a well-laid-out report, which made it very easy for members who are not financially astute to understand the figures presented in front of them. And I would like to thank you, Sev, for the extra work and the team that's actually involved in actually producing this report. So I'm sorry, I did want it to come out at the start of the meeting. From my point of view, when we had this, I think we called it bingo about eighteen months ago, we came up with various ideas to actually to save money. And one of those, as we've already discussed tonight, was the cultural offering. And I think it was suggested at that time that we really did want the museum to sort of like break even or find a way of operating it via helpers, volunteers. And I think they were a little bit disappointed that nothing's actually happened with that or nothing that we've seen has happened with that, whether that's happened behind the scene or not. I mean, you're saying, Sev, that you want us to give you direct input. We did actually mention that, but it doesn't seem to have happened. Thank you. You want to come back on that point? Or Lucy?
I'd happy if councillor Stevenson wishes to to come back on it, I will. I would, sorry, before councillor Stevenson comes in. Councillor Fox, the exercise that we did in a session with members was a theoretical exercise.
Right, okay.
It was it was not an exercise of formal decision-making and direction. It was not. But I understand the point and the 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 area that you reference is on the list of things that we're going to ask some questions about. But I'll let councillor Stevenson talk.
And thank you ever so much, Sev. Sev, I I think we absolutely still need to remember the impact of the pandemic which we're still dealing with. So actually, when we're looking at already very lean teams, particularly in places, actually, is is the priority making sure that our residents are kept as safe as possible through a pandemic? Or do we immediately? Or do we immediately turn to the cultural services? I think we would all agree that pandemic management, the businesses, et cetera, was absolutely essential. The other thing to note that our staff from, from the cultural side were actually used to deliver essential COVID related services. The second main point I would like to make, we've had an absolute game changer this year. Two game changers, the ichthyosaur and the mosaic. Those two things combined, they're not just exciting. It's not just finding a fossil in your garden. It's having discoveries that are of international significance. So members, what we could do is say, actually, do you know what? Cultural services, it's an easy chalk. I don't think that's right for Rutland. You're absolutely right, though, that the subsidy, and I am calling it subsidy, I'm not calling it funding, it does need to be precisely that. And that is why, um, Mrs Sharp and I, um, along with Mr Clayton, will be looking at that cultural offer. That work is starting. Well, I say it's starting, it has been ongoing gently in the background, and I will bring Mrs Sharp in, um, to add any extra details, but we really must make most of the ichthyosaur and mosaic. Yes, I believe it should be looking at working with partners such as Anglian Water. But I think members really do need to remember the context that we have been working in for the last two years. And Mrs Sharp, was there anything else that you wanted to add to that?
Um, thank you. Just, just to add, well, a couple of points, um, and, and, and sort of going back to Sav's earlier point, uh, the cultural, reviewing cultural offer has been on the list of, of, um, areas for us to investigate collectively as, as officers and members in terms of looking at how we can continue to provide a service whilst uh, reducing subsidies, as councillor Stevenson's, uh, referenced. At no point to date has it been a priority area identified by members for us to formally look at. As councillor Stevenson said, we are starting to do that, um, more formally, and, and certainly have been having discussions in the background. I'm really pleased and, uh, really, really grateful to Robert Clayton and his team for securing, uh, funding from, uh, a couple of, well, Heritage Lottery, uh, and, um, another funding source to enable us to look at opportunities for conserving both the mosaic and, and the dinosaur, but also to, to look at how that can help in the bigger con- uh, consideration around how we, how we look to deliver our cultural services in the future. So it, it, it's on the to do list and it's, it, it's getting, you know, in fact, we've got a meeting next week to start to formally, uh, scope the review process. We, members agreed, um, other priorities ahead of that cultural review, like, like the review of leisure, um, and, and our procurements. So I, 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 I would, I wouldn't want, uh, members to think that we've delayed something because we certainly haven't. Uh, we are progressing at, at the sort of pace that was agreed with members in terms of, uh, looking at that cultural offer. And we are very clear that we need to comprehensively review the offer, um, in order to help contribute to the council's overall financial position whilst hopefully being able to, to preserve and make the most of, of the museum and castle collection and, and the new finds as well. And very own days, but we are in all sorts of sort of um, exploratory discussions around different ways of delivering that service. Which we will come back and talk to members about in due course. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Lucy, did you want to come back? Because Mark's had his hand up for quite a while.
Oh, sorry, Mark. Very, very briefly. And also just to note, we were going to have culture, the cultural offer on this panel's agenda. Unfortunately, it was for the agenda in March 2020. And we then went straight into lockdown and it hasn't been on the agenda, um, since then because of other priorities. Thank you, Mark. You're very lovely. Thank you.
That's fine. Not a problem. As I say, I wanted to hear what you were going to say. Yeah, I mean, um, quite a lot has already come out, uh, in this debate. Um, councillor Payne, um, in her resume, mentioned that we are going to be having a meeting, um, in the near future to look at the list of options. Um, and so my question is, will that presumably that, will that feed into any consultants that we, um, are engaging? So that would be post, um, our meeting with, with you and, and to look at the options. That's my first question. Um, second question, will it be an informal meeting? Um, will it be face to face or will it be um, on a Zoom? Because I think a face to face actually might be more conducive. It's difficult to get, um, uh, opinion, body language and like opinions, uh, and a free flow of conversation when you're on a Zoom meeting. So I would ask that if we, when we do have that face to face to discuss, uh, the financial options that we have, that it's face to face. Um, and I would suggest also that it's informal so we can feel free about what we are discussing. Um, as far as the cultural, well, as far as everything that's come pre, um, Rutland Dinosaur and the, um, mosaic. Um, I think that does actually throw a spanner in the works when it comes to our cultural, uh, presentation to the wider community because as I say, people are going to be wanting to visit. And it may very well be that we can use it as a, uh, a, a springboard, if you like, to, to maximise the potential of, of, of everything that we are offering uh, in, in our cultural services. I would hope that that can be achieved. I read £40,000 has been, um, found in order to be able to, um, start the process of how, of publicising and protecting and conserving and, uh, possibly exhibiting the, um, uh, the mosaic and, and the ichthyosaur. It's amazing. They came at the same time, pretty much within a week of each other. So what I, what I suggested, as I say, I think I, I'm going to wait and see what Karen comes back with because we do need the savings. We need short, medium and long term savings. And I, I trust entirely in Sav and his team to be able to bring that to us. Um, tried and tested. Um, as I say, we are laymen, so we, we rely on them to tell us, um, what the options are. And, um, it sounds like there's already a lot of information that's going to be presented to us. So just wait and hear when that is going to be. Um, and then we can, uh, we can start the process. As far as medium and long term, I guess the present budget, um, will come this evening. Questions, I'm sure there are more questions that will be coming about this evening's budget, but as far as short, medium and long term, um, we can look at the, uh, this face to face meeting that you're planning. That's all I wanted to say.
Uh, councillor Watler, you have your hand up, would you? Have you got a question? And then I've got councillor Payne.
I do have my hand up. Thank you, Chairman. And I do have a question. But before I ask my question, I'd like to, um, briefly comment on councillor Stevens, uh, what councillor Stevenson said. Um, it's absolute, she's absolutely right. We were planning for this committee when I, um, chaired it a couple of years ago to start and complete, hopefully, a review of cultural services. And we had actually planned um, how councillor Stevenson was going to introduce the topic on the night of the meeting um, that, that got lost to lockdown. And it was all terribly exciting and I was really disappointed that we, we couldn't have that. And then it didn't get carried forward into the next year's municipal year's agenda. But my question relates to paragraph eight point two point one D. There is a table under there. I can't give you a page number because I don't have page numbers. But in that table, it relates to fees and charges. And it says, most fees are set nationally, fees set locally, the council can only break even and recover costs. Legally, it cannot make a profit unless it acts through a trading company. Now, I know a number of local authorities have set these up. My question is, have we thought about setting up a trading company? Um, uh, and what would be the benefits or disadvantages to us as a small authority?
Um, who would like to answer that one? Karen?
Um, to, to be honest, uh, we haven't looked at it yet. And Penny, I don't know, and Lucy, I don't know whether, when you're doing the cultural review, um, you will be taking that into account. But, um, I, I see there's no reason why we shouldn't preclude that as an option.
Um, I'll come back on that. I genuinely do not know whether it would be to our advantage or not, given our size. Sav is shaking his head. Um, so it was a genuine question. Um, it, it looks like Sav's got some ideas on it.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd the concept of setting up a trading company usually follows when you've got the nucleus of an idea or something you wish to sell. Um, I, I'm not aware of, of, of that, uh, uh, instinctively, that, that in the discussions we've had, there isn't sort of a natural business case for that, but let's not rule, let's not rule anything in or out, I would say, but it's, you know, um, let's see where we, we get to on, on some of the things. I- if I couldn't just, um, come in in terms of, um, just reflecting on the, the, the point about culture. And I'll go back to a comment I made a moment ago. Uh, I'd like to just, uh, pick up on also what councillor Oxley said. I mean, councillor Oxley is right. We do need to have a discussion about the issues and the questions, and I agree. Uh, and I welcome the fact that you said it'd be useful to do that informally, informally. I, I think that's a very good idea. It would allow for a freer debate. Uh, we do need to, to plan for that and think about how we do that. Might be different to the way we do things normally, um, but we need to give that some consideration. There are a number of things that, that will that are going to be relevant to it is that when we ask a series of questions of members, we may not be in a position, well, we're likely to be in a position where, you know, we've got copious details about impact. So if I say to you, would you like us to, I don't know, redesign a new council tax benefit scheme? I, I will be able to give you some headline impacts, but what I won't do is have 30 pages of impact and evidence. Uh, and of course, when we're asking, we're going to be asking about 60 or 70 questions, you're not, you're never going to have 30 or 40 pages of, of impact and evidence. So all I would simply say to members now is prepare yourselves for questions with some headline impacts. But we've got to get used to being in a position where we're going to have to make decisions uh, with the information that we have. And what we can't afford to do in our financial position is filibuster or procrastinate or ask for more information all the time to defer making the decisions that we've got. But please be clear, that doesn't mean I am, I am promoting reckless decision making. I am not. But I think we do need to be nimble, fleet of foot and quick. Uh, you know, and I can recall a long time, you know, in, in the past, you know, I remember when we did a review of youth services years ago and it took us ages. We had about five reports. And at the end, we decided to do nothing and wasted a lot of time. I'm simply saying we wouldn't want to repeat that, that type of scenario. So we will give some thought to that exercise. You did reference consultants when you talked about it. Forget about the consultants. I'm just exploring that as a potential. I am not relying on the consultants to come and save us. That's not what I said earlier. I said it's about having that in the army. We will continue with the issues. And the work we did last summer will continue, uh, following those issues that we said were on the long and medium term. And the next step of the journey is to ask members some pertinent questions. And, you know, I welcome everything that, that, that Penny and councillor Stevenson have said. My challenge to S M T, to the executive as well is, fine, we're going to look at culture. That's fine. But let's not look at it for two or three years. We don't have that time. If we want to stick with it, that's fine. Decide quickly. If we want to do something different, let's decide quickly and come with it. We've got to put a deadline to some of this because, you know, we're running out of time. So we're all going to do the things that people have discussed, but clearly the, you know, we, we are, there is a little bit of time pressure uh, that, that exists as well. I'm going to, I'll, I'll shut up there. Thank you.
Penny, you've been waiting very patiently. Would you like to come in now, please?
It was only, it was only, um, in, just in relation to councillor Waller's question, I was just, um, wondering whether that was a general, in general about trading companies or specifically in relation to culture. Um, in relation to
It was in general, Penny, not in relation to a service specific.
Okay. So if, if I may, just, well, in relation to culture, then, then we will be looking at all the delivery options that are available to us. Um, unfortunately, sadly, uh, the opportunities around putting services like culture into trust, um, which a number of years ago were, did, did deliver very positive benefits to local authorities in terms of financial, reducing the financial impact um, on the authority, that those, those same advantages no longer exist. But we need, we do need to sort of consider all of the options and, and we will be doing so. Um, more generally on the trading, uh, company side, um, I is, but in general terms, they're, they're not necessarily, again, they're not necessarily panacea. And they do incur costs just in the process of setting them up and operating them. Um, in, in the previous, previous life, both as sort of commercial director for a local authority and as a private sector consultant advising local authorities on commercial structures. Um, I was heavily involved and indeed a, a sort of managing director of a local authority trading company. It comes, it, it, you do incur costs, there are advantages to it, but it's, it is a case by case basis in terms of looking at them.
Thank you. Uh, I can't see any more hands. Do we have any more questions at all? Uh, I'm not sure if councillor Brown, you want to go next? And then councillor Waller.
Let Gil go first, councillor Waller go first. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. That's very kind of you. Um, I have a question and a comment. My question is, why, when we're in such dire financial straits, are we committing to a climate change officer post? Uh, I know we are committed to, uh, climate issues. But is that the way to get what we want? Um, and I'm very unhappy that we're increasing our staffing uh, without full discussion as a council as to whether that's the right route to take and what we expect the climate officer to achieve that couldn't be achieved through the group that Lucy chairs and all the excellent skills that we've got out in the community. And we've talked often, um, about using our, our, uh, resource, the community that is our resource. So I'm, I'm a bit unhappy about them, more than a bit unhappy about that. I am unhappy about that. And my comment is about the Armed Forces Covenant Post. Uh, the papers say it's still being funded, uh, but it won't be ongoing. So during 2223, we need to have, I believe, a serious conversation about how we support our armed forces and veterans and families of both within Rutland. And how much we are prepared to pay for the support that we give them above and beyond in the same way as we are going to be discussing every aspect of service delivery. Because service delivery to them might be achievable without an Armed Forces Covenant Officer. And please don't get me wrong, this is not any sort of comment on the present incumbent who I have seen at first hand, does a very good job. I'm simply looking at this from a budgetary perspective. Thank you.
Um, would you like me to take the climate change officer one first, councillor Fox? Um, yeah, thank, thank you councillor Waller. And I, I suspect that that's a question from a few, from a few members. Just to be absolutely clear, though, it, it isn't a case of saying we've committed to, to doing things about, um, the climate and responding to that. We have committed to being net zero by 2050 as a county. Um, that is going to be incredibly hard work. It is going to take an awful lot of resource. It's going to take a lot of money on infrastructure. It's going to be taking, make, needing decisions on priority. That's partly why we've got the carbon baseline assessment coming. And you're absolutely correct, councillor Waller. We have got a lot of really, really good offices in our organisation. But we're not looking at net zero just for transport or net zero as an organisation in terms of our property. We're not looking at net zero in our adults or children's. We're looking at net zero for the whole council. And that needs coordinating. We've already, or I've certainly commented this evening about how lean we are in the departments. So if it is a case of saying, actually, we don't want an additional officer to do this, then the question is, which service do you not want to be delivered? Because actually, if we are serious about net zero, we've also, as a council, committed to an ecology emergency. These things come with a price tag. They don't just happen out of thin air or within existing resource. And we've also already acknowledged, any money we spend needs to be done so very carefully. So therefore, I would suggest that if we are serious about delivering our net zero targets, then we absolutely need somebody who knows what they're doing to coordinate that. I don't yet know of an authority in the country that has made significant inroads without having dedicated staff to do it. Brighton, I believe, has just appointed thirty-two climate change marshals to go around the city. So actually, one climate change officer for our county, I think, is a very small investment in terms of a very big return. I'm happy if Mrs Sharp wants to come in and add things to that, but I really think, members, we have to be careful about what we are saying in full council. What are we are committing to without actually properly considering the price tag that comes with it? The price tag is somebody to coordinate with expertise, which we do not currently have on our staff. Mrs Sharp, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I think that covers it. Just to reiterate, that we don't, we don't have the capacity with it currently to be able to resource, resource this agenda without reprioritising and potentially stopping other stuff.
Thank you. Councillor Rizell, you had your hand up. We'll start to come back on councillor Waller's second question.
Yeah, I think it was a, it was a comment, and councillor Waller, you'll be delighted to know that I absolutely agree with you. In every part of the comment around how we support our armed forces, you've actually hit the nail on the head there. The country has a responsibility to look after its armed forces. How you cut that and where that support comes from is a national challenge. And I think you would find that one hundred percent of the twenty percent of the population who make up the armed forces community in Rutland would entirely agree with you that it needs to be sustainable and provided in a different way to perhaps has been provided in the past. There are multiple amounts of charities around the country that are oozing with cash, millions and millions of pounds, that is for charitable causes, that supports service families and veterans. You will, of course, know, as will other members gathered tonight, that the funding, the predominance of the funding for our current Armed Forces officer has been gathered through bids into the Armed Forces Covenant Fund. Those successful bids continue, and it will have my complete focus as we watch our service community grow potentially over the next five to ten years. And we see different brigade commanders arriving, but more importantly, our aging population includes some very, very well-travelled and delightful characters that we should look after. So please don't think I'm in any way disappointed in your comment. It has my absolute support. We must continue to look after our service population. How we do that should absolutely be on the table.
Thank you very much, councillor Rizell. Councillor Gordon Brown, you've been very patient. Would you like to come in for your question now?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, can I start off by thanking Sav and councillor Payne for what they've done? I think, as Owen said, the papers are excellent in many respects. However, I think I've got a couple of points to make. I've got some details as well. I'd like to maybe just pick up as well. But the number one issue, and I'm going to challenge the leader on this, and that is the leader, councillor Hemsley somewhere there, yeah, yeah, it's good. I put in the notes that, you know, maybe the cabinet should lead by example in cutting costs and move back to where we were for two years with five members on cabinet rather than six. I don't expect to answer tonight. But, you know, this is something which, you know, I think the staff, when you're looking at potential major changes to to staff areas and potential reductions, leading by example would be an excellent way forward. And that then brings me to the point that councillor Waller raised, the climate change officer. I think it's inappropriate, as a politeness way of putting it, to recruit a climate change officer at this point in time when there are no other clear reductions, no reprioritisation. As Miss Sharp pointed out in her final comment there, had we said, we're not going to do this, but we're going to do that, I could have been, well, I can start to understand that. But right now, just a bland statement about climate change officer, we're going to add one of these with no real justification in the paper, I think was very disappointing from Cabinet. So that's my starting position. Moving on, I think the, going back to the paper, I think the disappointment I had was the lack of the other options. But I've been quite encouraged by what I've heard this evening in terms of the cost-saving exercise. It wasn't that clear in the paper, and, or maybe it's my fault, I haven't read it carefully enough. But I would like to see a much earlier drive to cut costs so that we start to see cost reductions during this year. That way we'll definitely have them in next year. So that is really the issue. And I think I was delighted to hear from councillor Payne that a list has already been considered and that it's going to Cabinet next week. And I think on page thirty-two, I'd like to see on the report, and maybe this could be a recommendation, Chair, from our committee, more clarity on that cost-saving exercise. What is the programme? What is the clear programme? What is the process? You know, we're sort of pulling out this process that we go along this evening. I'd like to see that more clearly defined. What's the timescales for some of this work? And what are the target dates that we can get some of this done? You know, particularly from that list that's been presented to Cabinet. I'd like to really focus on that. And I think from what you've heard from the committee this evening, I'm sure from other members, you know, we, we are, we recognise the issue that we have in terms of twenty-three, twenty-four and beyond. And we've got to make those changes to the way we work and the way we operate and maybe even the services we provide. So I think there's a willingness by, by members to support the Cabinet and the officers in that position. I think I also agree with Sav in terms of, to some extent, specialists for consultants. I agree with that. I'm not convinced that a specialist, that the people we're looking at are particularly specialists in, as we know it. I mean, you guys, Sav, John Morley, Mark Andrews are all specialists. You're all senior managers. And I hope you had the knowledge and capability to drive that forward. That's where I maybe disagree in terms of that consultant. I certainly support councillor Beggie's position on that. Some questions have our, let's move on to questions for answering this evening. Thanks for the responses and the detailed responses from Sav that we've seen. I have on page four of the answers. Let me try and find that again. I've been through them this afternoon. Let's start on page four. The suggestion, and I think maybe this could be addressed in the list of projects that we're looking at, that changes to priorities may deliver savings. And clearly, that's made with some knowledge. And I would certainly like to understand if we're to change the priorities that we have in the current corporate plan, then what savings could be made there? What is it you're thinking in terms of that statement? So that really is a question that should maybe be brought back to us as part of the list of projects. On page five, five point one point nine, halfway down. This, thank you for explaining this, Sav. I now understand this. And what worries me is this, this really underpins the inequality of the system whereby just because Westminster has low council tax rates, council tax rates, they get more money for social care out of that social care money. We get less because we've got higher tax rates. That is just, you know, to me, unacceptable. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. I didn't realise that. I think it's something which maybe councillor Hemsley and councillor Payne can take up directly with with both the minister, once you meet Kieran Baranoch, but also with their MP. I mean, this is really something which is totally inequitous. I did, I think it's unbelievable, and maybe something we should be doing more publicity on ourselves. Because I don't think, you know, we've had some excellent discussions in the market squares this last couple of days. And I think these are points that we've got to get across to the public, that, you know, we are being, I'll be polite, we're not getting the best deal out of the government. Question for Sav, and that's to do with national non-domestic rates. Page sixty-one of the reports, Sav, we're holding two point seven million on non, non-domestic rates, national and domestic rates, and business rates, basically. Is that all the reserve against revaluations? Or is that a reserve against other things as well? Because I look at it, we recorded one hundred and fifteen K losses on appeals during nineteen-twenty. That's a very small figure in relation to two point seven million. I just wonder if this, you know, are we holding too much in that area, particularly now that the methodology has changed on the appeals. I know back in the early, early parts of the twenty-first century, you know, twenty, two thousand and five, two thousand and ten and beyond, there was some very significant changes. And it was a standard practice to challenge. I believe that's not the case anymore. So maybe we can go back to that very briefly on that, Sav. I appreciate it. The, I understand that the toilets now have been transferred upping them. That's great news. And maybe councillor Jones can just nod and say, that's great as well. We're delighted that's going to happen at last. So that would be good. I think those are the key points I've got there. Just coming back to the priorities that the scrutiny committee put forward this last year, eighteen months. I was disappointed in Miss Sharp's comment that we didn't look at the museum this last year. It was clear that the leisure and waste contracts had significantly more impact on this authority than the four hundred thousand pounds in the museum. I mean, just, the scrutiny committee looked at this at the beginning of this year, maybe last year. It was clear those were the two significant contracts that could have the most impact on us, sadly in the most negative way. And that was the reason that the scrutiny commission, scrutiny committee decided that we put those at the top of our list for priorities. So I just come back on that, and I'm glad to see that you will come back to members on the consultants in due course. That's all I've got to say here at this point in time. Thank you.
Sav, did you want to come back briefly?
I can't. I didn't know whether councillor Payne wanted to say something first, but I'll happily pick up some of the points.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to give some clarity over the list of projects. It's not being formally presented to Cabinet. It's just, we're just looking at it next Thursday. After that, then, Mark, you raised the point, there needs to be an informal meeting. There will be an informal meeting set up to go through with all members. Thanks.
Sav, would you like to come back on a couple of those points?
Yeah, yeah, I will. Just to pick up the point about the savings and projects. This is, we'll have to, members will have to be patient on this one. What we're doing is going to put a series of questions to members that will allow decisions about what our future might look like. When we get the answers to those questions, we need to build up a plan of how we might implement some of the things that we talk about provisionally. Much to my regret, we had, unfortunately, this is a massive piece of work, clearly, because if we're going to look at culture and look at other things, it is a massive resource required to do that. And unfortunately, it isn't the only big thing we've got to do. And we had a, we had an SMT meeting yesterday to talk about, talk about this work. And John Morley was talking about, we've got to implement the adult social care reforms by October twenty-twenty-three. So that, you know, the care account, eighty grand maximum contribution towards your care. It's a massive piece of work that's going to involve a lot from me, a lot from Andrea's team, a lot from the commissioning team, a lot from the social care team. So we've got to do that as well. John talked, in fact, he briefed the panel last night about what we've got to do in relation to the new CQC inspection regime, the equivalent of Ofsted for adult social care. Big Prep talked about changes to deprivation of liberty standards and the work we've got to do around that. We've got the ongoing procurements we've got. We have got a range of other big ticket items on the agenda. You've got a local plan that you're developing because you didn't approve the one last year. We're doing that, big ticket item. So when we get the bus, when we've got the answers from members and we know what the direction is on savings, we need to look at those and understand what we can do alongside the other big ticket things that we've got on the agenda. So we're going to have to be patient, and I'm going to have to be patient because I want us to do things quicker. I want the savings out as quickly as possible. But if people are telling me we're not going to be legally compliant if we don't implement the adult social care reform by October twenty-three, I can't ignore that. So I think we're going to have to be patient because it's not, the savings is not the only game in town, much to my regret. That's point one. So we'll have to be patient about that. The comment about priorities is straightforward. There's nothing specific in mind about that, but simply, if you choose to not have something for priority anymore, it gives you leverage, doesn't it? It gives you leverage to look at, well, what are we spending on that priority and what might we do differently? I could recycle that. So I think we need to think carefully about that when we're approving the next local plan and make sure we've only got in there the priorities that are really the things that matter to us. In relation to the business rates issue, I mean, I think I will pick this up at a separate director brief. I'll make this a topic for my director briefing, one of my director briefings, because it's, it's too deep, it's too much to go into at this moment in time. But effectively, we do have a calculation that supports the provision we have, but there is a lot of uncertainty around it. There are authorities that have got twenty times the size of provisions that we have. Businesses can appeal their rates, going back to the start of the relevant rating list, whether it's twenty-ten or twenty-seventeen. They can do it at the last minute. And if they're successful at the last minute, and Gordon will be aware, councillor Brown will be aware, there are companies out there that do this on a contingent fee basis. So if a company is successful, they can go back five or six years on evaluation. So far, we've been quite fortunate, lucky. I don't, I don't know what the right word is, but we've managed to hold things off. But there is a calculation that supports it. I will pick that up as part of, as part of one of my director briefings to talk about that in more detail, because my hope is that we can beat the provision that we've got, because, you know, it means that we'll be able to release funding. I think moving out of the pandemic and getting back to, are we ever going to get back to a sort of normal state of affairs? I'm not sure, given where we are with the economy and everything else. But if we can get back to that and have a year of that, I think we'd have more certainty. I think the pandemic has affected that, to be honest. But anyway, yeah, that's the business rate. I'll leave it there because I think I've covered the main things, if I haven't come back, by all means.
Thanks very much. Thank you very much. Councillor Oxley, would you like one last question?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, I know Brighton very well, and there are actually six hundred and sixty thousand people live in Brighton. It's a big city, Brighton and Hove. That's why they, and they can afford, and they're also run by, the majority is a Green council, it's the only council in Britain. So it's a bit difficult to compare Brighton with Rutland. I would also.
Commitment, though, councillor Oxley, is very good.
In fact, I know all about it because I was part of the, the driving force behind getting the Greens in a high position in Brighton many, many years ago. So I know all about that. My second point is, on that exact point, have we looked at shared services? Because I know that there are surrounding, in the surrounding authorities, the, one of them has engaged, I can't remember which one off the top of my head, has engaged a climate change officer, and I think they're only paying them thirty-two thousand. has engaged a climate change officer, and I think they're only paying them thirty-two thousand, just off the top of my head. I'll, I'll be looking at a shared service because I can't see them working twenty-four, seven on, on, on the role in, in Rutland. Penny's got her hand up.
Yeah, I was going to hand over to Penny. The, the very short answer was yes, we have. Because as I say, we really wouldn't take it lightly, saying, oh, can we have another officer, please? But, but Mrs Sharp, if you wouldn't mind just giving the detail on that.
Well, I was just going to say, yes, we have. But we, so we've certainly had discussions with South Castrichton, which is, I think, the authority that you're referring to, councillor Oxley. Really, really good officer, and it would be great if we were able to share, share her in terms of supporting our agenda. She, she is at, she, she, they are unable to, to share the resource just because of the, the extent of what she has on in terms of supporting South Castrichton. You're right, it is, we've used her job description to look at what might be the scope of a role where council to choose to invest in one. So the price, the, the salary is pitched at the same level, which is, so with on costs, that's the forty-five K that you've got in your budget papers. I've been in discussions with LGA about, sorry, with HR about the potential to potentially engage in the LGA graduate programme, which, which I think would be an excellent opportunity to potentially bring somebody in on this agenda. And that, if we were able to do that, that, that would certainly be a saving on, on the forecast budget. But obviously, it's for members to decide whether that's an area that they want to invest in.
Because I was going to say that, I mean, there are a lot, a lot of highly qualified individuals who would be able to help us in this, who may be able to see it as, as a stepping stone if you like, further on in their career. But it sounds like you've got it all under control. So it's a question of what's his space. I have one more question. It's, and I have asked this question before. It's about maximising the potential of our fixed assets in that we do have buildings which, would it be possible for us to, to perhaps sell one of them, try and sell one of them in order to get some money back in? And also the museum collection. And I'm sure that as, as, as an art dealer of forty years standing, I know there are a lot of little sleepers sitting in museum collections. I know that it will be difficult to unload certain items, but that, again, I, I, it would be not, there is the potential, I think, to find something, perhaps some duplications, perhaps thin out the, the collection. I don't know if that's possible, but I thought I'd throw that into the mix as well.
councillor Stevenson, you've got your hand up. Then councillor Henry.
And it was just about the collections. I did ask Mr Clayton that a couple of years ago. So the detail isn't very tight, but I can get the proper detail from Mr Clayton. The answer was, because I asked about duplicates, the answer was, it is really difficult. And I'm just checking that Mrs Sharp is nodding. It is really difficult to get rid, to sell things in a museum collection. But if you're happy, I will get some additional details from Mr Clayton because it is a very good point. I think that's right, Mrs Sharp. It's very difficult.
I, I, I think, I think the simple answer would be it depends what you've got in your collection. And there are certainly authorities that have, have found some, some gems within their collection that they, they have ultimately solved. Yes, there is absolutely a process to go through. I, I, I understand that our collection has, has got some, you know, it, we've have got a good collection, actually. Whether or not we've got those hidden gems that, that will generate sufficient contribution, I'm, I'm not aware that we have, but it's, it's certainly worth us exploring, I think, and, and part of the wider review.
And can I just come back on that? And I am willing to give of my expertise just to, if, if you want me to, Lucy, we can perhaps have a chat about that. Okay?
Thank you. That would be very, very helpful.
Okay.
councillor Hemsley, would you like to come in now?
Thank you very much, Chair. If I could just answer one question, which councillor Brown raised earlier about making sure that we are making more noise about the, the, the funding situation we find ourselves in. And yes, certainly, I even believe there's a, a press release going to be in the Daily Mail tomorrow or the next couple of days. But we do need to be very clear about where we are and what we need. And obviously, meeting with Kevin Badenoch will help that, but there are other people we need to be working on. And I'll continue on that journey and make sure I would feedback. But answering councillor Ox's question regarding property, obviously, we're in the process of finishing off the asset review. And once we've completed that, then it gets easier to work out and also understanding with some of the progress work that we need to do with the working systems, you know, whether we're going to work, you know, virtually more or less, what the requirements are, then we can make a clear decision. It'd be foolish to sell something and then go, oops, we wanted that. So, but it is, it is in hand and it is, you know, well on way. So maybe Penny Sharp can add more to that.
Thank you. Yeah. Good. So same thing really, that in terms of our strategy around assets, that, that sensibly needs to flow from the, the conditions survey and asset review that we're currently undertaking due to, due to complete by the end of this financial year. I guess it, it is probably helpful just to make the point, and Sav or Andrew may want to just add to this. I think it's really important for members to understand that the valuations that we have reflected in the budget for our assets are calculated on a different basis to the valuation that, that relates to what we might achieve if we were to dispose of an asset on the market. So the valuations reflected in the budget are, are based on essentially what it would cost to replace the asset. What we will be looking at from a property perspective is, is what we might get if we were to take it to the market. And within there, there's, there's lots of considerations about, would we want to add value to, to an asset before taking it to a market? For example, securing planning consent for, for one of the assets. But so there's lots of considerations that, as councillor Hemsley says, that, that sensibly needs to flow from, from the conditions survey that we're due to complete imminently.
Okay, thank you. I can't see any more hands up. So can we go on to isolate which is fees and charges? Do we have any questions? Well, actually councillor Payne, do you want to introduce the report?
Well, just very briefly, because I'm conscious of the time. So it's just to say that we're obviously reviewing this because we have to annually as part of the budget process. And there'll be a full approval at council on the twenty-eighth of February. The, the, it's fairly self-explanatory, the fees and charges for, for this year and correspondingly the twenty-two, twenty-three charges listed in the document, together with any variation between the two. So yes, happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions at all? I can't see any hands up at all. So really, if there's nothing further to add, we just really need to go through to the date of the next meeting. We do have another meeting quite close, which is on the Thursday, the tenth of February, seven PM via Zoom, which has a very full agenda. So if there's no further business, I declare the meeting closed at twenty twenty. Thank you. Good night.
Bye bye. Good night all.
Thank you, everybody.